Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order today's Thursday, November 29th, meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If you didn't notice on the agenda or on the room sign as you entered the room, we have renamed the room in which you're sitting from Room 151 to the Sophie Moes Room. We had a lovely dedication ceremony last week with the Confederated Salish and Kootenay Tribes, and this room is now named in honor of Sophie Moes, who was a very respected and honored tribal elder. Any other announcements? Seeing none. Is there any public comment today on items not on the agenda? And there are two items on the agenda. Okay. And it looks like some folks are already doing it in the back of the room, and that is commendable. So if you have not signed in already, please do so as you leave. It helps greatly as we put together the transcripts of these meetings to know how people's names are spelled, particularly if you're going to testify. So our current claims list, this would be claims received by the Board of County Commissioners between November 1st and November 21st, 2018, amounts to $5,196,912.18. We have two public hearings today, one of which is a continuation from an earlier hearing that we opened. For each of them, we'll begin with a staff report or a staff report update, comments from or presentations by the applicant or applicant's representative, and then opportunity for public comment and commission discussion. So we'll begin by opening a public hearing on the Alexandra State Subdivision Phasing Plan Extension Proposal, and we'll begin by a staff report from Casey Drayton.
Casey Drayton here to present the Alexandra State's Phasing Plan Extension Request. This is a request to extend phasing plan deadlines for previously approved major subdivision of Missoula County, subdivisions located about halfway between Missoula and Lolo with Burn Lane at the north and Valley Grove at the south. The subdivision was approved with 23 lots, platted out into four different phases, as you can see on the phasing plan that we have on the screen in front of us. The phasing plan deadlines were set as follows: Phase 1, December 31st, 2018; Phase 2, December 31st, 2020; Phase 3, December 31st, 2022; and Phase 4, December 31st, 2023. Those were set by a previously approved phasing plan extension, so it wasn't the original subdivision approval. But when they came in for that subsequent phasing plan extension in 2013, that's when those current dates were set. Those are showing in the left-hand column on the screen in front of us here today. The request for consideration that the applicant put forth is the proposed deadlines that you can see in the right-hand column. They're proposing to push each of those phases out by three years. So as mentioned, it was preliminarily approved in 2011 and is subject to 26 conditions of approval within the four phases. In 2013, that extension got us to the current dates that we have today. No phases of the subdivision have currently been filed. And on the screen here is staff's recommendation today. The staff report and RCA had a table in it to kind of lay out the dates that we were recommending, and just wanted to add one clarification. It said "proposed phase deadline," whereas it should have said "recommended phase deadline." The proposed phase deadline by the applicant was in that previous screen that we just saw with the map. Staff's recommended phasing plan deadlines are showing in the table here. So staff's recommending approval for a three-year extension to Phase 1 that would take it from the date of approval today, November 29th to 2021. Staff's recommending a little shy of a one-year approval for Phase 2, which would take them to November 29th, 2021, and staff is recommending that Phase 3 and 4 stay as-is. Missoula County subdivision regulations establish that phasing plan extension requests can only go out to three years from the date of approval, which is why staff is recommending a little bit of a modification from what the applicant had originally proposed. That would give them three years before they would either need to file Phase 1 and 2 or come back in with one or both of those phases and possibly the other phases at that point in time and ask for additional time. The applicants requesting these extensions to accommodate infrastructure development on the property, as well as waiting out some market conditions, are the reasoning that they've noted in their request. The phasing plan amendment was sent out for agency comment as per standard on October 24th, 2018. The only comment of note or concern that was received was from Montana Department of Transportation. That comment is included as an attachment to the staff report. Montana Department of Transportation, I believe, has been in talks with the development team here, going over some of the conditions of approval and how they're going to meet those. Seeing that this subdivision was originally approved in 2011, there has been some changes on the ground out there, I think that may make some of those conditions difficult to meet. So MDT put forth a few comments on those conditions, just in terms of what it may take to get those conditions met. It's something that the applicant can work through as they're trying to get to their final plat. They don't necessarily have to address those comments or conditions here in front of us today. They're just trying to get some more time to work through them before the first phase expires at the end of this year, as it's currently set. So with that, staff's recommended motions up on the screen. Like I said, we're recommending approval to extend Phase 1 and 2 to November 29th, 2021. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to make some comments? You might have to hit that. There we go. You're green.
Alan McCormick with Garland and Lana Robinson, representing the applicant here, which is Liberty Cove, Inc. We appreciate Casey's staff report and agree with the recommendation. We're trying to work out various issues with MDT, which is proving to be rather tricky given the changes that have occurred out there, but are making some progress on that and need the additional time to accommodate that. So answer any questions if you have, but otherwise, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the proposed phasing plan amendment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the commission or a motion?
I would move that the phasing plan deadline for Alexandra State's Phase 1 and 2 be extended to November 29th, 2021, based on the staff report and public testimony.
I'll second that. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Our next public hearing, which I will reopen as a continuation from November 8th, when we first opened the public hearing on Macaulay Meadows subdivision, let's begin with a little bit of a recap and status report from Casey Drayton.
Casey Drayton here with Community and Planning Services. As mentioned, this hearing here today is a continuation of the Macaulay Meadows development request. The applicant was Ti-Tam LLC, represented by Professional Consultants Incorporated. This hearing originally went, or this development proposal originally went to Planning Board for recommendation on October 16th, 2018. It then came to the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing on November 8th, 2018, and was continued to today, November 29th, 2018. If anyone out there is unfamiliar, the Macaulay Meadows Development is located in the Target Range neighborhood, north of the Bitterroot River and sort of on the north slope of Macaulay Butte, just about at the southern terminus of Humble Drive or Humble Road before it makes the turn down there. It's highlighted in blue on the screen. The Macaulay Meadows Development is proposed as a 17-lot residential subdivision that you can see on the screen here with a two-and-a-half-acre common area. This is the preliminary plat that staff had reviewed and came through the, with the application and the application procedure. It was also the one that had been posted and distributed for review by agencies as well as adjacent property owners. To gain approval of that subdivision that we just saw on the screen, the applicant had requested a planned variation to the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District standards for minimum lot size. They're also seeking approval for the 17-lot residential subdivision, which consisted of two variance requests: one to subdivision regulations relating to pedestrian facilities and another one relating to through-street connections. At the last hearing, staff presented the full staff report, so I won't go through all of it today. There were a few copies found in the back, in case anyone hadn't seen it. Staff ultimately concluded and put forth the following recommended motions. That was for denial of the planned variation, denial of the two variance requests, and denial of the subdivision. As mentioned, Missoula County Planning Board, or Missoula City County Planning Board looked at this request on October 16th. They also followed staff's recommendations and made motions to recommend denial of the planned variation, the two variances, as well as the subdivision. On November 8th, at the public hearing in front of the Board of County Commissioners, we gave a presentation of the staff report. There was a presentation from the applicant's representative. The applicant's representative did submit a revised plat at that hearing. There was public testimony on the item, BCC deliberation. Discussion on the application, discussion was focused on the application as originally presented, as mentioned, and as revised with that plat that the applicant had dropped off. So there was discussion on how to proceed with that. The hearing was continued with consent from the applicant's representative and agreeable to the commission to allow the representative to discuss with the applicant how they wish to proceed with regards to the revised plat. From the November 8th hearing up until the start of the hearing today, three additional comments were received that staff was made aware of. One was included as an attachment in the digital packet. Two have recently been received, and all three are provided to you today. I left a copy up in front of each of you, and I think I have one or two extras here if anybody wanted to see those. The comments received, one was from Webb Harrington and Greg Anderson, another from the Target Range Sewer and Water District, and the third one was from Pat and Kathy Schwank. The two from the property owners, Webb Harrington and Greg Anderson, and Pat and Kathy Schwank are their adjacent property owners in the neighborhood who were in opposition of the request. The Target Range Sewer and Water District letter was addressed to DEQ. It was copied to the commissioners as well as the City County Planning Board and planning staff, which focused a little more so on the slope waiver requirements and the sewer system that's proposed for this development. So with that, we circle back to where we are today. There's, staff's identified three different ways by which we could proceed here today. We could have Board of County Commissioner action on the original application in one of the following ways: it could be approval, approval subject to conditions, or denial of the application. The applicant could express the desire to have the revised plat that they dropped off at the last hearing, considered as an amended application, which would cease the review period. The applicant would then need to work with staff to identify at which point back in the process the application would need to go. They would need to submit to us all the materials to make sure everything in the application lines up with that revised plat, and staff could work with them on getting that new application back on track to go back to Planning Board and then in front of the county commissioners again. Or I suppose the third option could be that the applicant could withdraw the application from consideration. Would like to note that the denial motion for consideration, as staff had recommended it, the Missoula County Attorney's Office recommended a few text changes. It really just added a few items in there to try and clarify, and I believe John would be happy to elaborate more on that if you have any questions on that front. So that kind of wraps up where we've been and where we are today. So that concludes what I have for you. I'm happy to get back into any of the original stuff as well, if you'd like to. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to update us?
Alan McCormick, on behalf of Ti-Tam, the applicant. I think since the last hearing, we had a discussion with our client. We reviewed the findings of facts and conclusions of law in depth. We have some very fundamental differences of opinion about those findings of fact and the accuracy of them, as well as the conclusions of law that are drawn from those. But given the discussion that occurred after the hearing at the previous meeting, we don't, did not get the sense that there is an opportunity to have a significant discussion or useful discussion about those differences of opinion with that. And therefore, we will withdraw that revised plat that was submitted, contrary to the information provided here was not submitted at that hearing. It was submitted several days prior to that hearing. Nevertheless, we'll withdraw that, so it's not part of today's consideration, but we are not withdrawing the application, and therefore, we'd request that you make a decision based on the application as it was presented and taken through the process. Happy to answer any questions that you have at any time. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go ahead and take some public comment at this time. If anyone would like to comment on the Macaulay Meadows' proposed subdivision, come on up. Try to be succinct, succinct as possible. I might be a little bit lenient with the three-minute rule, since we don't have a whole ton of folks here today, but please state your name for the record and welcome.
Okay. I'm Alan Dutton, and I live right across the street from where this development is going to take place, on Humble Road. I have several concerns, because when the first plot plan was sent out, it showed that Swank Court was going to be widened, and I want to know if that is still a part of this development. And the reason is, is because Swank Court is 100% on my property, and if they widen it, then they're going to take more of my property, and I have to pay taxes and I have to maintain that road for that distance, and it's approximately 300 feet. So that cuts into my property considerably. There are other, there's another party here that it's going to take a part of their property and the property across the street from them if they widen that street. So we've gone through this about four years ago or five years ago. The city council came out and they decided they didn't want to fight us in court. So that, it stays at that. If they're going to widen that street, it's going to take portions of people's homes even. So we're going to, we'll probably fight it if they continue to want to widen that. The next thing has to do with the water quality. We have shallow wells in that area. The aqua four, we don't know what the volume of water is that moves through that. And when we moved in there in 2005, we were told that that development across the street would not exceed 11 lots. Now we're up to 18, 20, or whatever it is. And I want to know, why are they reducing the size to .8 acres instead of 1-plus acres? Is that for tax revenue purposes for the county, so they can gain more property tax? Or was it done for economic reasons for the developer? I don't know.
Well, let me just add, Missoula County's not proposing the development, so what do you see before you today is from the private property owner, so...
Okay. Well, it seems that you have bypassed or ignored certain requirements in the area of one acre or more for properties that have septic tanks. So now we add a whole bunch of more septic tanks, and that can affect our quality of water, since the aqua four is so shallow. If we go down 200 and some feet, we can get into another aqua four, but that's expensive for each one of these property owners in our area. And then building up on the slope, that seems ludicrous. We look at what's happening in California after fires and so forth, but once they go through this development phase and they build houses, they have to level out areas. We may have displacement of land onto the properties below, and that is of a concern. And I guess that's about it. I see a couple more people here from our area. I don't know whether they'll have any comments or not, but I'm not against developing that area across the street, but let's keep it on level playing ground of one acre plus and not going up onto the hillside.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Additional public comment? Come on up. Oh, surely there's a taker out there. Okay, here we go.
My name is Peggy Morrison. I live at 4415 South Avenue West. I carry several hats with me today. One is a personal landowner, two is the president of the Target Range Homeowners Association, and three as the peanut gallery for the Target Range Sewer and Water Board. As a homeowner, I worked very hard, very diligently on the rural west end zoning, worked very hard to get everyone's approval and rewrite and rewrite, and I'm concerned that the west end zoning will not be followed, and that it should be, especially for out here, which leads into the aqua four, which I think has been quite well-covered. I have a concern about lowering of water tables, and I noticed in briefly reading some of the documentation on this, there was some disagreement as to how much water would be required by this subdivision. And for those of us that live out there, water is a key. Many of us are irrigating from the ditch or from groundwater. The concept of putting sewer up on the hill, again, has been dealt with, and basically, I'm stalling to give people some time to decide whether they're going to talk to. But this concept of having the sewer in a position where it comes downhill into other people's septic systems, other people's wells, just on their ground, I think kind of makes most of us go, "Ugh." So I hope that the board will take a good look at the letters that have come in from the homeowners and from the Sewer and Water Board, and stick by the west end zoning. Thanks for your time and patience.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Any additional public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. One question that I have to follow up on, something that Mr. Dutton asked, and this could be either Casey, Alan, or Dale. What's the status of upgrades to, or widening of Swank Court? Dale?
Dale McCormick with Professional Consultants. To answer that question, there were no off-site improvements that were proposed with the subdivision, only onsite improvements. Thank you.
Okay. So the answer is none. Cola, any questions? Or comments?
No, I think we discussed it in depth at the last hearing, and I never, and I hope I didn't give the impression to the developer or the representatives that we are not willing to have conversations about specific issues, you know? But you may be right that at this point and at this juncture, if they're quite detailed, I think that there's kind of several bigger-picture issues that we're dissatisfied with, but I don't want you to feel like if, that there's ever anything specific that we can't discuss and have a reasonable conversation about. But that being said, I feel like we're kind of where we were at the last hearing.
Yeah, I do, too. There's, I think, significant, serious and pervasive problems with the application that is before us, and I don't say that lightly, knowing the level of effort that goes into these sorts of projects and proposals. And for that, I am in concurrence with staff's recommendations relative to findings of fact and conclusions of law. I would also add, and I don't know that it was in the staff report, but I would add that how I look at these proposals also is colored by the Montana Supreme Court's decision Heffernan v. City of Missoula, in that you really do have to take seriously growth policies. These are not just throwaway documents, and I look at this particular proposal from that lens also. So I guess I don't have much more to add at this point, and I would be willing to entertain motions.
And I guess I'm still confused at the point I was confused at at the last hearing, is do we, I think we made it clear that we don't support the application as-is. So do we deny it, or would the preferred process be to pull it, you know, amend it and bring it back to some point in the process and force an amendment? Is there a recommended process to go through? And especially if you have calculated staff time, since there will need to be significant changes, if all the changes that need to be made were made, it would be significant staff work. What would that cost?
And I would just add, it seems like what you're describing would be the second, or the second option maybe that you had lined out, Casey, insofar as if the applicant wanted to submit an amended application of some form, they could. It sounded like for Mr. McCormick that they are not willing or interested in that, but Casey, did you have anything else to add to Cola's question?
I would just add that in order to do anything other than take action on the request that the applicants have put forth here today, you would need some sort of consent from them as well. And what we heard from Mr. McCormick, it sounds like they're wanting to move forward with the application they have put forth for consideration. The amended application, if they wanted to amend their application, they could do that. It would require that action from them, not necessarily from you. And they would work with staff, like I said, to revise the application and essentially resubmit it. It wouldn't be resubmitting a whole new subdivision, but it'd be some amended version of what we have here in front of us. Those amendments would probably be fairly significant if they were to go through and check off, you know, the issues that you raised and staff raised in the staff report. So it's our estimate that it's probably about, you know, 80% of the work, give or take, from our end, from, you know, how far back we would go with it, to get it out for the appropriate comments from property owners and things, and then get it through Planning Board and then back to you for consideration. It would definitely take some work on their end, though, before it, you know, even really came back to us.
Mr. McCormick, could you come up just for a moment? So just, just to be totally crystal clear here, the applicant is not interested or willing to take a stab at addressing the deficiencies identified in the staff report by way of submitting an amended application and restarting the process at some earlier phase?
Alan McCormick, that is correct. We don't identify them as deficiencies, and therefore, it's not possible for us to address them to your satisfaction. So we're not interested in going back and amending the application and trying that route.
Okay. I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. I did not interpret it as clearly the first time, so...
Mr. Hart, are you chomping at the bit to say anything?
Not really. Not really. I think, I think Casey...
I think, I think Casey's giving you your course of action.
Yes, sir.
I have one additional question, and probably should be directed to the young man that was just up here, but how can they guarantee that they will not have migration of sewerage down into the lower areas in our properties and our water rights?
Thank you. And I should say, you might not have been present at the last meeting, but that is a concern that we raised also. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, motions.
I would move that the planned variation from the minimum lot size requirement in the Target Range West End Rural Zoning District be denied based on Missoula County zoning regulations, the finding of fact in the staff report, and public comment at hearings on November 8th and 29th.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that the request to vary from the requirement to install non-motorized transportation facilities along Ponderosa Lane in the subdivision be denied based on Missoula County subdivision regulations, the finding of fact in the staff report, and public comment at the hearings on November 8th and 29th.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that the request to vary from the requirement of providing through-street connections within the subdivision be denied based on Missoula County subdivision regulations, the finding of fact, findings of fact in the staff report, and public comment at hearings on November 8th and 29th.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that the Macaulay Meadows subdivision be denied based on the subdivision application, environmental assessment, public hearing comments on November 8th and 29th, written public comment, planning board recommendations, the findings of fact in the staff report, and other information in the record.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. It is denied. Is there any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, we will be adjourned.